Togem apkat, dimorana atkaun, at shontar shonkono, shontum nabalap, kumbu Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Kalangan, Senator Ko, o kalangan, one foreign person, Senator Perez. Tay, Tagir, Katslamotail, Iman, Patro One M Chief Clerk, and Patrola Nanet Ngolta To, Lu Kuren, Mara, Kanto, Roll Paul.
Senator Asen Abraham.
Amen.
Senator Ki Quavis Junior.
Aye.
Senator Isaac Artemi.
Aye.
Senator Ricky Carl. Senator Taggart Di Daniel.
Amen.
Senator Sonse A Ekar.
Mine.
Senator Wilfred H Edmund.
Amen.
Senator Stevie G Edwin.
Amen.
Senator Brian P F S.
Amen.
Senator Jack S Harris. Senator Helgenat J Johnson.
Amen.
Senator Stevenson A Joseph.
Aye.
Senator Alfred Sen Latorre.
Patromat mine.
Senator Sendalina Aleka. Senator Miguel Michael Yola.
Mine.
Senator Casinda C Ludwig.
Amen.
Senator Magari Miguel. Senator Erin Lina Smovik.
Amen.
Senator Sheldon G Net. Senator Nulbert A Perez.
Amen.
Senator Mitroy Simuna.
Aye.
Senator Jason A Walter.
Name, Mr Speaker.
Aye.
Corum, Mr Speaker. Kalangan, sansal magtray, sabulman ke corum, monate ban katlamotail, tapatrola motaila, record and reflect. But Senator Walter or Senator Carl execution nan uya kupur naanut. Uya kia sansal magtray sabulman ke corum, atayka katlanan sabulmatay uya kupur. Amay kupur, puyinka guliyan traidyo, uya sabulmatay kapeng, melil kapeng lap, o keipuni bang kupuranan nilap, keipuni ponmolen wawili landon pay. Waunki sabulmar, the, waun lap bang kupuranisyo ko, waunki sabulmar likantko, nanalangko, naaganyeko. Waunki nabalap kaiti koros nan paliyan triak momocho government. Melil national, local, or state government. Waunki cabinet and pon pay, the honorable Oliver, waunki acting governor, the honorable Francisco Yovanich, waunki songkubung nabalap. Nelson Joseph, yang amuis songkubungan, osakset waunki vice speaker, Michael floor leader Abram, honorable Senator Kan Koros, Iman pil poniso waunki langlang saomorokan, uloyso, seriso, sumasakan. Nabalap Kan Koros nan Chamberwood, man pon pay koros, nan Chamberwood pon kalap wet, pon taga pay paykan, onan we laut kan esangka, reket opatje, guliya pumailkan nan uya kupur, toror karyesek isu wet. Trailen kagan katla, tapatrola motail, iban ponis of floor leader Abram. Kalangan, kame, main, Mr Speaker, kom kupurapoye ngol searen, kapung wawon dak, patje angate sabulmamoye mu ngolme, pay traidyer, nan wea wet. Nan Chamber, hee ngol wong, kame main, Mr Speaker, wong melil, vice speaker. Wawong riyekan pokapay, honorable Senator Kan Korusie, ibil ngolindu wawong raill chunetongkan me patje ang trail, nan wosan yinamalam, hee ngol, sekaratan waw kapeng, ran wawon, wong man pon pay koros, wosak koros, melil irailkan me patje ang trail, nan man K P S. Main speaker ni, waw, man patjone sekarat, momooc kisambalwojo, peki. Kapantalan watwato, alaltan channel, rekariaman. Sansal kama kit me mi, kapantalan watwato, alaltan channel, koros mu utung kama kitu, maasan iei. Uwong maasan iso, motion payta, trail kapantela sabulmatay, watwato, alaltan channel. Kamu floor leader. Kalangan, Speaker, ibil man sekarat momooc kisambalwojo, peki trail and suspend order of business. O torot yang ban, nampe isu walu ye, kapdolongan kama tan kusinet, o pek pek torot sekan. Rekariaman. Sansal maw, kama kit sang floor leader Abram, trailen, patro yang, tagat yang number isu walu ye, introductions of bill and resolution. Uya sansal me mi, utupan kama kitu, iban ponese, o trai kat katier, tapat patroyer, pon number isu walu, anshon kat kilong, tapatwalong bills kan, or resolutions kan. Ma Senator Koros, sabulman ki, aty ngolindki, anshu maun, kat kilong tapatwalong, bills or resolution at trail, katlamotail, o iban ponis of floor leader Abram. Kalangan, Speaker, puyangkat, patjolamoua, ika sabali ngol sekarat waw. Speaker waw, ibileu sekarat momooc kisambalwojo, peki trail, and suspend order of business, kat, kat di, patjodi, apali order of the day, me standing committee report. Amen. Sansal kama kit sang floor leader trailen, kat di tapatro yang ban order of the day, me standing committee report, number isakew, o trai kat katier, tapat patroyer ban order of the day. O iban ponis of chief clerk, standing committee report, number, mebki ri sakwalula, and ri sakxilu, me pit, floor motion regarding Riarte and Hubert Rodriguez's case, sansal mui kantin judiciary, kama talopration. Kalangan, chief clerk, sansal me report wet, ban report long, sang committee in chayen ko, karate ban ponis of chairman and chayen ko, Senator Edwin.
Igalangan, Mr Speaker, right ngol waw. Patje yang saulm sekaratan keipuni waw lap, me di ayer. Wongging kame, vice floor member kan. Wongki raillkan me yang patje yang trai, me singranet, nan Chamber wet, o masliki. Niwaw, Iman, patjone guliyan di sabulm kantin chayen ko, patjone, uya da kama kit yo, momooc in legislature wet, renkak. Wakda, o, katarow wet, standing committee report, mebki ri sakwalula, meyala ri sakxilu, o sabulman ki.
Sansal maw, kama kit sang Senator Edwin, trailen kat yang nan maasane ben report, number mebki ri sakwalula, meyala ri sakxilu, maasani, o sabulman ki, ta koros mu utung kama kitu, maasani iei. Uwong maasan iso, peki kama kit ya payta, trai kat kat nan maasane be, o iban ponis of Senator Edwin.
Igalangan, Mr Speaker. Nansal maw, me standing committee report wet, me itanlongo to, nan, momooc in legislature wet, floor motion yo, me uya waitar, ansho kisamalar, me toke, eh, melil, Mr Riarte, Hubert Rodriguez. Ika yo, Iman, patjone uya, committee sakarmisika, peki apantin, eh, kanaginagla, totoh, wet rap. Mr Speaker, committee toolaro, trai, uya ben case wet, o, utana, eh, bilabahan apalang legislature, the committee, and kak, eh, patjone, eh, apali songan uya ben case pokat, peki. Main tam, eh, manakapriyamanet, eh, song songan, robaaki, main, ele, eh, main kaidi wasan, eh, konang, eh, uya ben raben pungan, kagan uya waitong legislature wet. Sansal, me sabulmatay pokok, o oversight, selangkak, kila nga ta, uya ben totohkan, me uya waito, ma, mia sapung yo, eh, trailangkak, and kopungalan, uya ben totoh, kagat, ah, songan uya ben totoh, me, eh, pit pungan aramas, main tam kasambal, eh, aramas, and kak, robaaki la, eh, robaaki ta, song sawas, robaaki la, madang kopung berangkak, and roba. Ah, basically, eh, Mr Speaker, main, sansal maw, me case wet, uya waitar, utana ansho kisna, utana asak. Eh, sansal, me, nianso, me case wet, uya wait, eh, patjone uya wait, nan main ti tiyo. Nan, korong, eh, pain witness, pain wea, me, eh, wong case wet, eh, sotra record, de kak tiar, o in, eh, song songan, eh, katayat yang committee, eh, sutoo, oke, yang omone, selkiti, me kotyo, me sotra record yo, refle. Aba, Iman, patjone, eh, isutukak, patjone, ma, mia record, the sotra record, eh, wong songan uya ben totoh pokat, isutukak, kamelele, me, eh, ban sotra record kes, banan uya waitan, me toke case wet. Ito me iban kagan patjone, me peki, wan ansho, me toula towa, eh, main na layang, eh, wasakan, me kinnaki la, record, eh, main, na patpatosili wasakis, aime, patjone, eh, kawit mia, wong, manakapriyaman, main, meka yo, maw, eh, song sawas, wey raillangkak, eh, dedikaytang, arait ngolangsho, berangkak, robaaki la, o lel wasan konang. Aben pil sansal maw, eh, Mr Speaker, me pit, eh, case me mi, o, ma uya ben raben pungban mia, eh, sebil luketo, guliya ben M L S C, eh, Mr Kalop, sansal maw, man nianso, me floor motion patolong, mia taroboyo, me bil, yang patje, me, marin, eh, legal counsel Kalop, eh, patro bawo, ido, sura signature, eh, toon. Toon wasan marin, manakap, eh, lawyer yo, me sansal. Are, kalalaba, uya waitan, eh, manakap, eh, Mr Kalop, ma, eh, mia ansho yo, wey guliyan waw wet, o pit case wet. O basabang, mutomot, me mia, eh, sansal nan report, mesod, eh, the pit case et sod. Eh, sansal maw, me mia ew case toror, me pit ta, eh, mia ansho kisamalar, me, man chaynake, rent, eh, ten pesen, eh, all minutes. O, main me kotsa pungala, i, i, i case yo, eh, manakap, me no, eh, represent, eh, Ray, the penenei, o songan sawasi irail, nan molongkopung, me pit ta case wet. Ah, me pit ta, case me, manakap, me net, song songan, eh, manan legislature entek. Nansal maw, eh, kaapal, me bil mia, main, isutukak, patjone, mayawasam, jurisdiction in, eh, case wet, ban patroyer, me isme ban trapin, eh, anaan etek. Peki sansal maw, manan trust territory, me, eh, case wet uya wait. Eh, bil uya waitan, mohon, eh, sabulmatay national government, the national courts, o bil the state courts. Aba, at the end of the day, eh, tam me mia, me song songan, patjone yang committee, me, reselkiti, eh, depend, kamaramas, me kaidi irail me wet. O allegation me mia, o, me, tene, eh, police, me, uya kamaramas, irail, me selkiti. Abi etu, main, patjone, eh, Mr Speaker, ma, wong agi getail, me kes muran, eh, patjone case wet, nianso, me patjone uya waito, eh, mia, mia, ansho kes, me, pining aramas yo, me selitit, irail escape sang, eh, nan chayen. Irail kawala, wasan nagila, kasik, nan police station, irail wasan kasik, irail patrola station, o, amen manakapo, isutukak, patjone, ya, tam, ele da, abwe, sansal maw, me kaskiti, amen, eh, toon totoh, in station. Are, nianso, me irail, changasang, eh, wasao, eh, sansal maw, me police paaki irail, o, nianso, me ropaaki irail, eh, manakap, me kaskiti, ol, me, eh, sapungala, the, re sapundip ilaw, manakapo, me kasikiti, o, eh, mealan, nan uya ben totoh. Akawit, uya waitan, eh, manakapriyamano, eh, although, eh, kaidi ra, eh, case wet, sota pitai ra, me, kaskiti, eh, manakap, me kameala aramaso, ah, peki ra, yang patje, uya ben totoh yo, eh, uya ben, eh, mokitiyo, me ele da kamaramas. O, peki, eh, sansal maw, me, poliskan, nianso, me irail paaki irail, re, eset, eh, rapatjone, me, mia, dipso kabar, me rokolkol, eh, nianso, me rakaskiti, eh, manakap, eh, me sansal nan report, rakaskiti, peki, peki ra, main bebean, eh, ban kaka de, bil, eh, uya da mokitiyo, me banan, ele da, bile ew kamaramas. Are, Mr Speaker, main, tam, eh, Mr Riarte, song songan, me, uya ben, abweliyo, and kagan uya waitan, melil, ira, mia ra bebean, me ira selkiti, eh, mokitiyo, me ira, bebean, eh, isutukum. Committee isutukak, patjone, ma, i, ira, pun, the sapung, eh, i, committee bil kawit, nan, nan, report, me, eh, kaidi wasan, robaaki, pun, eh, legislature. Ah, ido kawit, mesukak, patjone yang ra, o, sansal maw, me, nan, report, me, eh, kalalaba, uya waitan, ra, me mia, kawit ira leti, sang song sawas, o momon me mia, me, ah, momon kawiton, eh, sola, sola, anaan ben kopung, o, anaan etek legislature, eh, and, and toke banai ira, to apali la, eh, uya ben sawas yo, eh, me kagan mia. Ah, Speaker, main, utana sansal maw, me wong, legislature wet, sansal maw, me, ido, the only way, legislature wet, ban kak, and patjone, the, sent, me ban apali la sapung, eh, totoh, in government, eh, law suit yo, sansal maw, eh, require, eh, judgment yo, and kak, sansal tosan molongkopung, me ban ruwase legislature, and patjone, the, trai trai yo, me ban sawasi akita, aramas, me, main arail pun, the, uya ben mokit, me uya waitan, ra, isutukum. Are, main, imulaan, totoh, me sansal, main, ido kawit, me legislature wet, kak, and, uya, trailen kak, recommendan ra, iran robaaki, eh, song sawas, me ban kak, eh, sawasi iran, nan, eh, ira, me, kisambal, me ira bebean, eh, arapungola. O, nimulaan, totoh wet, ma, eh, molongkopung ban ruwase, the, me legislature ban, bananet, patjone, the, me wet. Awu dan trai ban patjone, ah, beside stat, main isutukak, patjone, tam legislature ban kak, and uya, kugita isutukak, kawta, tapatjone, the, me wet. Ah, main, meka yo, kisambal, eh, ma, bebean yo, mia, o, peki kaapali, case wet, eh, bil, sumbarer, ngatar, toula towa, ah, tam, eh, bil sansal, me statute of limitation, eh, bilit. Are, wong ya, o, wong kawitin committee, main tam kaya yo, kisambal, eh, iran, kila nga tan, ira song sawas, o, me ban kak, sawasi ira, o, imulaan, totoh wet, tam ban payta, ma, ye, mia, me wet, me, molongkopung ban, eh, ruwase yang, legislature wet, ah, ban uya, totoh, me trai anaan etek, o, utan trai ban apali, peki uya, ruwase molongkopung. Beside stat, main isutukak, kila, yang omone, eh, legislature wet, the, kawit yo, ban mia, trailen, patjone, the, eh, me wet, me, pit restitution, ligan, ruwase molongkopung. Aime, tume, main, songan, eh, patjone, Mr Speaker, guliyan di committee, eh, report wet, Iman, peki getailen kak, sabulman ki, ta kalangan.
Speaker.
Kalangan, Senator Edwin, o, K P S, ta kawit, ben report.
Speaker.
Kamui, Senator Perez.
Kalangan, Speaker, main, patjone, me wet, puyangkat, kaksansan nan record, tam wong, me, tere getailen dak, kasa maw, keton saw, o, and kaksansan nan record, me present ra.
Kalangan, Senator Perez, chief clerk, record and reflect, with Senator.
Mr Speaker.
Yan, weya kupur naanut. Kamui, Senator Perez.
The captain, the board, and Ito ngal chairman, chayen ko. Iman, kapatraya, karam, eh, sura ra, sabulmatay jurisdiction, jurisdiction over the matter. O, and kat, sansal nan record, me statute of limitation, eh, gayul gayul, isahw, sumbar yesek. Peki mia yer kawit, koyang, eh, dependan minute, me, selak, raben pung, peki statute of limitation runner. Ah, main, Ima, main, Ima, song sawas, anaan, main sawasi, kagak, the ex pointment of the record, that, eh, edgak, yaduan song. Songan, me ban kak, chalitang, kisang ban tip, kagak, yang, pugogan, and pugomaw, and government. Aime, tume, patjone, kapatrayang, ma, bil, raparaba, eh, pardonaba, aime, tume, kagak, sawas, eh, utung atap, kilong wet.
Kalangan, kamui, Senator Ned.
Kalangan, kame, Speaker. Mon iban patroy, Iman, patjone, pakita, me itungalan, itungal sakarmisikilan, ban kupuranan nilap, kaunok wet. Wow, and patje, me, magom sakar kita, nilang. Nan wasan, uya lamalam, itungal sakaran waw, ban kupuramit, main speaker. Vice speaker, floor leader, itungal waw, wong honorable Senator Perez. Itungal sekarat, raan maw, and patje, me bil sansal er, nan kalal, olalalakin kalal, and pisarawian pon pay. Wong man pon pay koros. Eh, keyo, kapengang Senator Perez, peki, tiyangki, itungal privilege motion, and sansal nan record, me, patjone, sokapant, peki pokok, and momocho. Iraker yau, eh, me pit, committee report, me, sansal er. Are, wong, nan committee report, eh, keyo, Iman, patjone, tiyangki, itungal sakaran, kapeng lap, o mulatak, ban kupuran chairman, vice chairman. O honorable Towe Kan Koros, and committee and chayen ko. Keyo, committee wo, kasalayang wey pagon, win, nan pining kokusinet casek. Tuwana, waw, waw parak, tonapei teyo, wong, man pon pay koros. Kalangan lap, wong chairman, vice chairman, honorable members, and then committee and chayen ko. O tam, sansal ena report, aime, getailen, kiwan, sabulmatay, kang koros, wong jurisdiction, and ran, kawata kusinet. Irer yau, Iman, patjone, kapatrayang, man uya, teman kupuray. Keyo, me pit statute of limitations, ba ei, salar, eh, ban kakada, ma mia, song sawas, tiyareks, sang manakapriyamano, eh, kak, open case more, ma mia, man kate te, sansal o te te. O, game sekilang, me pit jurisdiction, getail uya, guliya ben aramas. O, ansho, manan, and ton way, and pon pay, ban lel tong trail, jurisdiction, emera trail. O, ime, kapengki, yang, committee and chayen ko, peki totoh, and pokok, and uya, guliya ben aramas, ime sansal er. Aime, nyar lap, main, Mr Speaker, kalangan.
Kalangan, Senator Ned, peki, kawitkan, me sansal nan maasane ben report, me etu maasane ben report.
Iman.
Chair, Speaker.
Na, mon iban ponese, kama kit, amay kupurapoye, ponese, ma Senator Daniel, kamui Senator Daniel.
Sekaratan, wongging kame, floor, vice floor, o, riyek, Senator Kan Korusie. Eh, Speaker, Iman, kapatrayang, kisinoropis, mesudus sansal nan report. Nan mia Latin term, riaw magtray, kinius, nan molongkopung, me pit, sangan case wet. Renda res, ipsal likitor, meaning litigation is already over, lapse. Res, chudikada, molongkopung, neksanger, peki, eh, jurisdiction. Appeal, term, new trial, is over, elapsed. Imakareta, sotra, manaman, me, molongkopung, te, sotra, bil bil kak, patjone, te, katin uya, ni, ira pokatra, tawlier. Kalangan, kame, Speaker.
Kalangan, Senator Daniel, wong iran, kapatrabat, and kawit, me toke report, mebki ri sakwalula, meyala ri sakxilu. Ma salar, maasane ba, iban ponis, kama kit me mi, getailen retungti, maasane ben report. Koros mu utung kama kitu, maasani iei. Uwong maasan iso, kama kit payta, peki getail retungti, er, maasane be, iban, ponis, main motion. Koros mu utung, trail sabulman ki, ta report, mebki riyek, walu, meyala ri sakxilu, maasani iei. Uwong maasan iso, kama kit payta, oran wet, eh, sabulman ki, ta report, number mebki ri sakwalu, meyala ri sakxilu, bakapdolonger, sang committee and chayen ko. Kamui chief.
Salam, Mr Speaker.
Ma salar, iban ponis of floor leader Abram. Kalangan, main, Mr Speaker, hee ngol, sekarat, waw, sabal, Speaker, kom kupuray, mon itan. Mi taka kama kitu, Iman, ngolindki, ay su, K P S, o, kisambalriyaman, me yang patje ang trail, yang apapali, sakmatay, D U C, nan, win pon pay, yai, sohulgin, onolang, o, isola tu, Iman, pagidak, trailen katki, yang rayo, lopu lopun. Kalangan, floor leader, kama kit, ban, maang, Iman, me, kalangan, kupuramaw, oloko, peki amakak, yang patje, legislature, nan uya kupur, and ran wet. Kamui, floor leader. Speaker, waw, man, patjone, uya, kama kitu, peki, trail and suspend order of business, kat di, patjodi, apali, number isakxilu, yai unfinished business.
Amen.
Sansal maw, kama kit sang floor leader Abram, trailen, kat di tapatro yang, unfinished business, yai number isakxilu, o peki mia, utupan kama kitu, iban roll, magtrail, patpatroyer, ban number isakxilu, unfinished business, o iban ponis of chief clerk.
Legislature Resolution Number, Pruwali Sakxilula, and Riakxilu, Legislature Draft One. Proposal for Resolution, setting for the ceiling for appropriations for the Comprehensive Budget Act for Fiscal Year 2023. Superseding Legislature Resolution Numbers 118-22 LD1, 157-22 LD1, and 180-23 LD1, for adoption.
Kalangan, chief clerk, sansal me, resolution wet, report long, sang committee and moni, karate ban ponis of chairman and moni, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan, kame, main, Speaker, hee ngol, sakaratan, kapeng keipuni waw, and kak, patje, magom guliyang, kitiar momoto. Kalalaya, and ban kupurkan, wasakan, me konang tok. Wongging kame, main, Speaker, vice speaker, floor leader, honorable member Kan Korusie. Niwaw, kara kalangan, main, patas, sabulmamay, committee and moni, o, uya da kama kit yo, getailen kak, pokata, wakanata, legislature resolution number, Epkuoli Sakxilu, Lebnyarri Sakxilu, me game sekilang, watwate, LD1.
Amen.
Amen. Sansal maw, kama kit me mi, trailen kat yang, nan maasane ben, kama mutan, resolution Epkuoli Sakxilu, Lebnyarri Sakxilu, LD1, kat yang, nan maasane be, o, kamanata, niwunsek, koros mu utung, kama kitu, maasani iei. Katian nan mahsinebe o kamanata, ni unsek, koros ma utung komogito mahsaniyei, uwong mahsani sho. Poe gi komogit and mahsinebe poitar, te kettatnan mahsinebe, kamuy, chairman finance.
Kalangan main speaker, yay resolution word paan, kalau dala sabulmamay budget ceiling and FY23. En kak, tapun da committee, ananin project silu, me yay, cha cha kan pa patosan nan sabulmamay compact sector, investor grant carryover, pa patrodi on, jala million eysek walu, silop, walinen riakit silubukin. Ayimet main speaker, kalangan.
Speaker.
Yay tem mahsinebe, kamuy Senator Movik.
Flora amendment yo mi men, kapataieng.
Kam, tola mui.
Kalangan Mr. Speaker, mon iban yang pato, ay tunggal sakaratan kipun i wow, unpatong tamu komchi yang giyamilang. Purudong nan wasan medjen, ay tunggal sakaratan wow, wong dun kamuy Mr. Speaker, vice floor honorable Senator Kang Kurusiya, o iran kan me yang patrodi on nan eh, gallery ranwood. Eh, Mr. Speaker, iman kitaylen pokatao, uyala lam lam gi Flora amendment number yepkuryau, lebinyar eysek silu.
Ayo main. San sal, komogiti yo sang, madam Chair Senator Movik, nan mahsineben resolution aktraylen bil mahsani de patawan Flora amendment, yepkriye sekryau, lebinyar eysek silu, koros ma utung komogito mahsaniyei, uwong mahsani sho. Poe gi komogit poitar, iban ponase madam Chair Senator Movik.
Kalangan Speaker, Flora amendment number yepkuryau, lebinyar eysek silu. Ime song songen bil kapataieng tamme chairman in finance eh, kasalitar, o bil kalau dala ceiling eh, ni one eh, one amount me mimi, million limao, five million five hundred twenty and two hundred and forty dollars. Me pan apaliyala emergency request yo, sang PUC me pan walianla tonggen ew tongtuleni er mou tananana po, mia niay sou karwaru, o oneta tonggen pilkoi, me anan melen. Orimet eh, oralapin eh, Flora amendment wonwood, itoki sabulmamay lutut, kalangan.
Mosen, mosen. Mahsilar mahsineben Flora amendment, iban ponase komogit me mia, kitaylen retungti mahsineben Flora amendment, yepkriye sekryau, lebinyar eysek silu, koros ma utung komogito mahsaniyei, uwong mahsani sho. Komogit poitar, te kettlan and main motion, koros ma utung kare sabulman kita Flora amendment yepkuryau, lebinyar eysek silu, mahsaniyei, uwong mahsani sho. Komogit poitar, oktae sabulman kita, detunggalan kita, Flora amendment yepki, eysek, yepkuryau, lebinyar eysek silu. Mia tem mahsinebe. Iman. Mahsilar mahsineben komomotan resolution, iban ponase komogit me mia, kitaylen retungti mahsinebe. Koros ma utung komogito mahsaniyei, uwong mahsani sho. Motion poitar, oktae retungti er mahsinebe. Kitaylan, katlanan usus, amona kitaylan usus, iman ruol, sabulmatail ruol, mer required duplication, pan seliti, oktae kagan. Kettla ususki komomotan resolution word, o declare me resolution number 31 sekryau, lebinyar eysek silu, LD1, yalar LD2. 31 sek silu, I'm sorry, resolution number 31 sek silu, lebinyar eysek silu, LD1, yalar LD2. Kitaylan katlanan usus, o koros ma utung komomotan resolution number 31 sek silu, lebinyar eysek silu, LD2, kawata nibel, be palimaon. Koros mesudung kawatan nila. And san salang wei pagon, balol sabulmatail tatok, te usus on komomotan resolution 31 sek silu, lebinyar eysek silu, LD1. Usus ay eysek, o sio tra uwong, ranwood, te kamanata resolution number 31 sek silu, lebinyar eysek silu, LD2. Chief.
Salam Mr. Speaker.
Mahsilar iban ponase floor leader, kalangan Speaker, kupuray iban, bagi kumalil lebina sho. Kumal il lebina sho, may kupuray tabang kumal ma lebina sho. Speaker.
Meche, alangan Pont Bay, Physic CH Radio. It's a new way of calling to the young in Pont Bay. And can you talk about your mind with this? This is CH Radio. My name is Officer, Governor, and Wayne Pont Bay. My passion is to help the Pont Bay Public Broadcasting Corporation. My kind of heart is very small and I'm a little bit tired. But I'm going to play a little bit more and I'll watch it.
Sin two, take four.
I'm going to tell you one thing. I'm going to tell you one thing, and I want to say to you, honorable members. Speaker, I'm going to tell you something. I believe that all the members of Pont Bay are the children of the government and the country. I have known that the people of Pont Bay are very proud of me. They are proud of me. I'm going to tell you something, and I want to say to you. I'm going to tell you something, and I want to say to you. I'm going to tell you something, and I want to say to you. I'm going to tell you something, and I want to say to you. My honourable point of privilege, I want to say to you, floor leader. Speaker, I'm going to tell you something, and I want to say to you. Suspend or drop business. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to pay you a bill, calendar. Mr. Speaker. I'm going to tell you something, and I want to say to you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to pay you a bill, calendar. I want to say to you, Chief Clerk.
Legislature, Bill number 85, by the law, I read the legislature draft one of the bill act. Amending Title 10 of sale number 10 L-99-22. The Conference Budget Act for fiscal year 2023. By adding an section 10-2D and for other purposes. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Report long to Committee on Finance to Moni Kara, I want to say to you, Chairman, and Moni Senator Joseph.
I'm going to tell you, my speaker. I believe that the government of Moni, he is going to call upon him. He is going to call upon him, he is going to call upon him. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you.
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. My honourable, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Oh, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Million Raisa Walo, Silloph, Wale, and Reapit Silubuki. And Kakapali Project Lap Silu. Yay, Lukop Elementar School, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. None one of it, Limabuki. Palikar Elementar School, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Oh, Primary Healthcare Facility. Million Asia Keo, Silloph, One, and Limakit. He won't move, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Moni Kay, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Rain, Rain, May, in America. Awe, awe. Don't pay, and Kakakaski Long, Planin Totok. Kakakaski Yay, Totok. Yeah, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Oh, Rain, I'm going to tell you. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Ah, in the one, Project Pukai, I'm going to tell you. Legislature, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, my speaker.
I'm going to tell you, Senator Joseph, I'm going to tell you, my speaker. Yeah, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Yeah, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
Speaker. Oh. I'm going to tell you, speaker.
I'm going to tell you, Senator Mobu.
I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. We are going to let you, floor amendment number 11. Line, Labinal Raisa Silu.
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. And my honourable, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Floor amendment, I'm going to tell you. Labinal Raisa Silu. Oh, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Oh, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
I'm going to tell you, speaker. If floor amendment, I'm going to tell you. I amend Title 4 of State Law Number 10 L-81-22. Budget Transmission, I'm going to tell you. Amount 5,520,240,000. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you.
Mr. Speaker. My honourable, I'm going to tell you, my honourable, floor amendment. I want to say to you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Floor amendment 11. Labinal Raisa Silu. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Floor amendment 11. Labinal Raisa Silu. Speaker.
I'm going to tell you, Senator Perez. I'm going to tell you, Mrs. Speaker. If you're going to tell me, floor amendment, you have to. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. If you're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. If you're going to tell me, floor amendment, number 11. Yeah, Labinal Raisa Silu. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
Mr. Speaker. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
Speaker.
I'm going to tell you.
Speaker.
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
Speaker.
I'm going to tell you, Senator Mobu.
Speaker, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Labinal Raisa Silu, on Committee on Finance, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Moni Kay, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, Moni Kay, I'm going to tell you. Representation, oh. Committee Fund. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. And so, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. If you're going to tell me, and I'm going to tell you.
I'm going to tell you, Senator Perez. I'm going to tell you, speaker. If you're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Member, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
I'm going to tell you.
Mrs. Speaker. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Special meeting, and I'm telling legislature. With my, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Random, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, project, I'm going to tell you. And I'm going to tell you, 2023. Yeah, short for total. Because, yeah, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. If you're going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Committee Sharp, I saw it. Negative 1,000 plus. Committee, fill, thorough book, coach, coach, assignment. Let's say, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. You're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. Speaker, strap. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Committee, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. You're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. You're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. Oh, if you're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. Oh, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. You're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. You're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. You're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. If you're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. You're going to tell me, I'm going to tell you. Finance, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you.
Speaker, I'm going to tell you. My honourable, Senator Perez, I want to say to you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, Speaker, I'm going to tell you.
So, oh, oh.
Meche, alangan Pont Bay, Physic CH Radio. And so, such rich, decent, way of calling to the young in Pont Bay. And can you talk about your mind with this? Physic CH Radio. My name is Officer, Governor, and Wayne Pont Bay. My passion is to help the Pont Bay Public Broadcasting Corporation. My kind of heart is very small and I'm a little bit tired. But I'm going to play a little bit more and I'll watch it.
Sin two, take four.
... Nee icha serikoros, gasel elkumaikoros, wey masalie. Igen broke, broke makram, esocha sabanyo. Ibilgen berr, berr diee, esocha sabanyo. Orma wey senamen, bomeka unu. Orma kogio, ee molimba. Wey pan samala, omilawa sato. Ganakichonka we weyo, nee icha serikoros, gasel elkumaikoros, wey masalie. Gansombi ro, itiyongi ti. Dongisongi matok, meiko waki. Daide chokuwe, Orma kogio, ee molimba. Wey pan samala, omilawa sato. Ganakichonka we weyo, nee icha serikoros, gasel elkumaikoros, wey masalie. Daide chokuwe, Niyatjatu kasa, ganda to me may kelle. Ayapronga tarongam, metanak esembo kala. Yapin wey disalitlits, dodcha instead nama. Wey ki yong wey to sembo, yang paliware. Ikin goko seli, tuwecha isalohala. Wey ki yong wey tangya, lemeta ke seyela. Omayengay mesapwong ayet, me men bakale. Gan men lawo puruto, wey apu ti wono. Wamasi kuet, wey rang kuet, taban kuet, isodja ban tijisa. Wey ki yong ke seyela, wasal sade, paliwe meye. Me men bakonanay, wetengka mwalokolokwi. Nanibano ba, ayime kansen nama. Wey isompa kilangna pitan, nanma homyo miye. Arumawekoma platan, den ke seyela. Niyatjatu basai, ganda to me may kelle. Ayapronga tarongam, metanak esembo kala. Yapin wey disalitlits, dodcha instead nama. Arumawekoma platan, den ke seyela. Ikin goko seli, tuwecha isalohala. Wey ki yong wey tangya, lemeta ke seyela. Omayengay mesapwong ayet, me men takume. Gan men lawo puruto, wey apu ti wono. Wamasi kuet, wey rang kuet, taban kuet, isodja ban tijisa. Wey ki yong ke seyela, wasal sade, paliwe meye. Me men bakonanay.
Medche alangan Pon Bay, Physics CH Radio. And so such rich tea sangar way pocon. Kalan yarnech Pon Bay, nan kan takagabachaba chen may kunisia. Physics CH Radio. Ma uyasa volman government and win Pon Bay. Me pochepana volkawaiden Pon Bay Public Broadcasting Corporation. Me kin kata rech ngolngil nan kilorit kit babukii paisatwao, ho kin kelailki watch nen.
Sin tu take four.
Motion recant the mass amendment for amendment. You have to hear the opinion of the chief.
I want to move in trying to recant the mass amendment. For amendment, you have to hear the opinion of the chief. For us, we would like to make a motion.
Aye.
We want to make a motion.
Show.
Speaker, take a moment, ma.
Motion for it.
Take a moment, ma speaker. Gak pake da moment.
Take a moment.
Arakolpojich, met doga ikowa. Ipeke genrong, torrong. Inesemakolpojich, etoke ikomi. Ar yetko lek.
Som bom walu, inilat nan tomo.
Main motion. For us, we would like to recant the mass amendment. For amendment, you have to hear the opinion of the chief. Make a motion.
Aye.
We want to make a motion.
So, division.
Ban ponase, motion and division. Take ban. Speaker, ban recognize motion and division me me. Kueki, me request and division. Oh, sansal me, aye or show, netuon speaker reality. Asutu sansalamao. Me niya, me puita.
Speaker, take a moment, ma.
Take a moment. Monata iban katlanan division or iban kumal.
Speaker.
Take a faller. Oi ban ponase, chief clerk, on motion and division by roll call.
Senator Abraham?
Aye.
Senator Abis? Senator Artui?
Noa so.
Senator Daniel? Senator Edgar? Senator Edmund? Senator Edwin? Senator Edside?
Aye mine.
Senator Johnson?
Aye mine.
Senator Joseph?
Aye.
Senator LaTorre? Senator Leka? Senator Leola?
Aye mine.
Senator Ludwig?
Aye.
Senator Miguel? Senator Movic?
Noa so.
Senator Nepp? Senator Perez? Senator Simona? Senator Abis? My name is speaker. Aye.
Take and go sansalen. Way, Sabulmatail, who choose on floor amendment. You have to hear the opinion of the chief. Aye, Isaac Riau, oh Waluso. Ban wood take a minute la, floor amendment. You have to hear the opinion of the chief. May to floor amendment. Come we, Senator Artui?
Senator Artui? Kalanganan kupromi. Munai iban pacho, Mr. Speaker, I mean pachyan Sabulmoni. Chugal sakaradangkei boniwam, med yanga nilang. Melil nan malo dey sakaradanwa, bang kupromi. Melil wa on the vice floor, oh yanga honorable members, chorus. Oh yanga ki raelakan, mete itayan kuchail. Mr. Speaker, ban yil floor on Senator Edside.
Senator Artui, yil floor on Senator Edside. Chairman and help, come we.
Kalan, my Mr. Speaker. Munai pachay, sakaradangkei boniwam, pachyangchamakom, sa career kalapko, Pon Bay umsak. Kapretanan chamber, wa onkomi, my Mr. Speaker, ya mochi. Vice Speaker Miguel.
Floor Lita Pram, our board members can karusian. Oh, staff can, oh, for us, my pachyangchay, nisomoch. Nung yata mayo kamut, uliantuma, soke as delegation. Melid chairman in soke as delegation, Senator Isaac Artui. Wea, kamut yow, shenka katrobo Sabulmoni ta. For amendment, you have to hear the chief. The chief, kaki kariaman.
Aye man.
Ban, Senator Edside, sansalamal, kamutich, sang telepagein soke, ta lenkachyan, and mass amendment, floor amendment, you have to hear the chief. The chief, the chief. For us, we would like to make a motion. We want to make a motion. Kamut puita, trykatkachyan, man, mass amendment, oi ban ponase, Senator Edside.
Lan, my Mr. Speaker. Kamut yow, wey ta poyaki, ananan yata maintenance in alin nan win soke. Melil PTA, weyer rail assessment. Oh, yata priority kay, melil mon schoolkan, mon insarawigan, oh, melil, patol to boar, me, mimlangkaapkan, me, sosakun watsang. Kalapun watsang nan aalpung, watslan nan aal sapung. Re, moniya ban sosak, patchila wasapik. Melil moni stuycharap, wasarjenkan, me, PTA penestim, me, pakklelto, re, me so ya kamut. Kalan, my Mr. Speaker.
Speaker. Ban we we, no, sansalasang Senator Edside, ma bawarai, ban ponase Senator Artui.
Ei kalangan speaker, raip tungalwa. Mr. Speaker, iinin kasombalki, abolban naalap. Songan wey ban katoak, me, sansal, ma kuchail patching. Ibatroan, me utan, saul, eh, kuchail tungal misin, me, lilken inimeta pay. Resutu inimeta pay from patching. Wouki, maraban pay, oksin luwakan, merakun patchikia. Re, iban patroanda, one tera, me mia muo kuchail ansewet. Mo, ito wasan iparke. Trail de, patroanda, obso to, utan, patroan yang yowasa maraban troon, kiti yangye, den pay bugat. Aga trailam murang, trailambang kaulamke. Trail, trail bilu yaya. Ab trail yani, one amount, one million dollars. Trail kitiyo, kuchail, trail, shea shea la, yowasa rail kitiya pay. Imen patroan, me, eh, tam, floor amendment, siluyo, me, introduce sanswet, same amount. Itre isutu patroan, me, eh, songan, taatam, marabang yatiyang lola, marabana. Komu, ika sombalu, assessment den me. Mo in own project, especially project. Mo in, eh, man yey melil me assessment, damu in assessment bugawana, ne patrayan, songanakobuga. Kuchailan, lekis confident, me, eh, kau naptaan da toak me, mona trailban patroan da tera. Kuchail wugir, me, pay road maintenance fund. Eh, min datra, ansewet, mon, me me, egis tera lola, ab. Ma kuchailban, mete wada, kuchailan appropriate, eh, the whole fund. Trail kabpropriate one time, clean out abu. Esreban apaliata, allen don't be ponop. Tam ika sombalki, Mr. Speaker, eh, trailen, trailen kakuyata, mea koth, me ban, egis worry. Akaiti mea koth, me kuchailban, kagejokuti, ansewet, marabeljutu yamawa, lakampaliyata, na, daptadup pop, wey ben pay bugat. Iyanga sombalki, kuchailan wey ta pay bugat. I, iutanimentra, kau yavoo, fifty thousand, but melil fifty thousand is not much. Eh, i, i, isutu men, kuchailen, eh, patroan taat, for the sake of, eh, appropriating. Trailabu yavoke, me songan, wasa tootu, me, utan, anana, kuchailan utan yata mayo. Re, i, i, yegis concernki, eh, pakkpukwai isutu, uong, ma bil, kamanamanla, so be it, ab, tam i patroan. Just from experience on, wey ban, eh, tam kuchailen patroanda on, men da patching. Eh, sansal mo, me, ansewet, ma, kuchail jutu kita sin, luwan paykan, me yirayen payki, ansewet. Eh, PTA ikin patrola, oh, nan triyang, patchikwa, saakan, me. Kuchailan kamanata, tra on, patching. Imi i patroan kesaombalki, we, ong, kuchailan kama urta, eh, misinin payikau. Kuchailen, in the name of patching. Isutu kamelele, me, me baki, kuchail kama urta. We, one volume, eh, yirailgin, anana, inimata at one time, mo inabang, shipalasang, eh, fifty thousand, me kuchail song songan apaniyanswet. Kalangan, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker. And sansal, me, me, cost estimate, you matter, sang PTA. Speaker. On, make a motion. Come we, Senator Perez.
Lan, Mr. Speaker. Imen ya, patroan kusareda itron, iran fitmet, iran utut. Lan, Mr. Speaker, tensansal, me, mon, me, trailban da tongbi, baradosan, registration is tosa, fifty percent in moni, me, aramasakan gin, register is tosa, oh, fine, ma ban barosanale. Oh, ime, kelail patroan, me, monuot ban toge, ambo na. Imen bil, sansal, man, samutail rokert, me, Idea, nyansomra gin, patroan inimata pay. Rogindu tongki, absolute value. Rogindu tongki, quartz. Ma, sand, boardab, mixture in, eh, asphalt. Ma kuchailban, tradnan, estimate, me sansal ban ukortain, regila, pay tan. Wouki songoris, absolute. Mixture in asphalt, sand, asphalt, oh, fine akurke. Iyaba bugat, me, den yata, eh, eh, chen merakun etkila. Re, onro, maraban estimate, padols. Restuval inimata, eh, is tosa pohn, ma, is tosa pohn. Tam estimate toka saliengrail, ime, nerail son, inimata pay baan yaya. Eh, son inim pay, monakap men, me angetiitza madalini. Trail nana bil porala, oh, patroan, expose yangta, me, mona kuchailin inimata pay, kuchailan kak mangi, me. Kaidet luwan payitza merakun kuchangki, eh, padols. Arail estimate kan, me kasalita. Abil kak, nexta, konan, eh, ibig yard lamau is tosa, ibig lamau esha. Akaitet luwan pay, magan kakan padols. Aymet, kalangan, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
I want to move in, iban.
Speaker.
Ban ponase, ma Senator Artui.
Kalangan, iban pachyang, Senator Artui no Senator Perez. Eh, imisansalasang Senator Edside, ema melil, eh, Mr. Speaker. Tam kuyo kesaombal sangamach, sansal, me, PTA me ben, isariono, weya, eh, quotation, eh, estimate, don't cause him, eh, on, me ben, eh, inimata, eh, pay. On, eh, wasakan, magone yang anonoanka. Eh, ika melalama, eh, PTA ban, babansuwa, deyang rail, wey ki, eh, rail tungal misin kan, bansuwa, tumawa, resutu ban recommend, eh, wey ben ta tof, sansa. Aymet, me men, eh, kabachayang Senator Perez or Senator Edside.
Speaker.
Senator Edside.
Lan, my Mr. Speaker. Eh, tam, Senator Edwin Pachwano, emele lap. Ime kareta, ta tongka kushkunlei, para gunius, luwan pay, melom lumurla. Maang maangunan, tarope, paykatarwogar, barabang lap, katsang, wasama sakanakan kan, kampaktila, kiti pay, me karagar, me konne, eh, patchila wasao. Re kakuninta, eh, lo, trako wecha, patch, patch ko, ko we. Kiti pay, me loom lumur, ime kuyu suwato, me sakanakan. Ime kareta madalini, maalkau, sochakap, no, maon, ne, poyaki, toala, loom lumurla pay. Ime, Senator Perez, nan nanchim, yata, playo pay, misin, madalini. Astimata, PTA me ben, assessi, penestia, wong, ma we, pa. Teru wasa, me, patolkan nan, nan, melil nankaap, wasa sir.
We have to pay for it. 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 We have to talk about it. One million dollars. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have two thousand dollars. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to monitor. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. Thank you.
Speaker. Speaker. Senator Edsight, Senator Mauduk. Senator Mauduk.
Thank you, Speaker. We have to talk about it. 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 We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for 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 it. Next fiscal year, we have to pay for it. 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 We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for 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 it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for 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 it. Thank you.
Motion and close, Speaker. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, I'm going to talk to the chairman. I'm going to talk to the chairman. I'm going to talk to the chairman. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to make a resolution. For amendment, we have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. Testification is essential. We have to pay for it. 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 We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to make a resolution. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. Thank you, Speaker.
Essentially, we have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to approve the amendment. Speaker. Committee. Senator Ned.
Thank you, Speaker. I'm going to talk to the chairman. Delegation in Madaline. Motion and close. Thank you, Speaker. I'm going to talk to the chairman. Delegation in Madaline. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Senator Ned, we have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for it.
Speaker. Motion and close. Thank you.
President. Sir, 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 the President.
Speaker. I'm going to talk.
Thank you. I'm going to talk.
For amendment.
Senator Daniel.
Thank you, Speaker. For amendment, we have to talk about it. 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 We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to talk about it. We have to engineer it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about 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 it. Thank you.
Essentially, Senator Daniel, we have to make a cost estimate. We have submitted to the PTA. For amendment, we have to talk about it. Speaker. President, I'm going to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for it. For amendment, we have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to approve the amendment. Speaker. Thank you, Senator Loyola.
Thank you, Speaker. I'm going to talk about it. I'm going to talk about it. Senator Perez. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. I'm going to talk about it. We have to talk about it.
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to offer amendment two oh five dash twenty three. Loyola. We have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment. We have to make a decision. We have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. I'm going to talk about it.
Thank you.
President. President. Senator Loyola.
Thank you, Speaker. I'm going to talk about it. 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 We have to pay for 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 it. We have to talk about 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 it.
Speaker. I'm going to talk about it. Thank you, Speaker. I'm going to talk about it. I'm going to talk about it. For amendment. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to talk about it. 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 We have to pay for 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 it. I'm going to talk about it. I'm going to talk about it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it.
Motion and close, Speaker.
We have to move it. I'm going to talk about it. We have to move it. We have to move it. We have to move it. We have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment. Delegation in Ned, Senator Loyola. I'm going to move it.
Thank you.
I'm going to move it. I'm going to move it. For amendment. I'm going to move it. 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 For amendment. We have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. For amendment, we have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to make a decision. For amendment, Senator Edsight.
Hello, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to talk about it. I'm going to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it.
Thank you.
I'm going to move it. I'm going to move it. We have to approve the amendment. We have to approve the amendment. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. I'm going to talk about it. Committee, Senator Edsight.
Hello, Mr. Speaker. The amount of fifty thousand. Fifty thousand dollars. We have to pay for it. 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 Lawsuit. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for 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 it. Rules and regulations. We have to make a decision. We have to make a decision. We have to make a decision. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. We have to pay for it. Committee, Senator Artuwe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to talk about it. We have to pay for 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 it. Essentially, we have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. National government. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have damages. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for lawyer. We have to pay for lawyer. We have to talk about it. 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 We have damages. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. But we have to talk about it. 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 When it comes to a lawsuit. We have to clearly pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to pay for it. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it.
...sue national government. O niyare ipan sue national government. Irel sue national government poranale restitution sang national government. Rana pain generel sapung mawoyao individually teran pain state. Imo koyon paitak yonmo. Kekak sa panganama mona ibantola?
Iwawaki, moni banala Senator General. Siwumikte koma pan yang class action lawsuit de individual lawsuit. Yewoki state pan nyangala lawsuit. Er iksangki recepitar caseo moni pan yang fundi caseo.
Kalangan itzaid ma state pan eh sue national government dikak yang bungu. Ama individualka pan pueki individualka babamme arail right eh sapung mwayau yongrel personally. O yirel pan personally sue national government. Ai ibilyang anki paitak. Magreban set president yon magreban kita moni yong individual kay poran kak sue. Arail sudan eran kak sue national government. Aban yang mon murunranwo tribangkak wya sangan tongolmogut duetomo. Ime eh Vice Speaker kasalita sangan komogut kay miayor pil pain employees in Bombay state mesapung mwayau yongrel. Repain tonga trangsalir prangsani yirel lawyer poran kak eh assert arail right on tamoyau yongrel. Tri ban purala tri eh kwa diwino. Bombay niyare kanayor arail caseku rokanayor. Ani yang somra banut sue national government personally pueki rapanale eh poi poi yo pueki. And kopungongrel tam esapung memio. Isduka mellemi Bombay state anayang inbov. Ma Bombay state ma ban sue ai kamellemi utela nanakita. Or i amoi wasame iya kes paitanki. Katalban kak pali sangan ababkan me tri kapurudan dang. Kukumay kita moniyo we want the same. We want the same treatment. Poter yo moni ban kota poter yo pil case spending nan personnel. Kalangan.
Speaker.
Yeah, then I can go. Commentary of the President.
Kalangan, Mrs. Speaker. Iman yangtupadawan me wuts. Puyu sansan me case nan boan state o national eh Bombay state kana. O boi Bombay state kana inbov aramaski individual eh aramaski. Imi man padawan ai kamellemi magreban padawan da on sentwood. Aban aboli lawyer ma ban sewosi yrel ban eh metaglanan mogut wood. Maraban claim punitive tamach. O la natarrel o shangtigan ma ban kak eh pil paten. Eri ma sentwood pan goyang aramaskau so. Aban sewosi yrel poran kak alledi niyare claiming punitive tamach ma aban kaptilong nan eh molongopung ebesem. O boonubukat niyare ban kilongorrel kana aban goyang individual kaome. Yirelkaome metaglanan mogut wood. Eri iman kamellemi eh talteki ichin ban representar masukat nan eh nan ruben ruben sawasno yau yu. Apa bukat sang obsin kabina ban kak sewosi yrel kak pursue nan molongopung ebesem. Yrel kak tatongi case marakanakiero. Poran kak kaptilong arail rabanbung me ban apalila metaglan may raitsuanakiro. Mrs. Speaker. I ibadawan utrum kamodawat koyi sepaitaipan Governor Governor Communication Number 616. Laban yar reza xilu. Ito wasat etiet ma ten nananak moanghi ma. Aban goyang eichia itame iris etiet hibobi. Aramaseban metepata wya niwia dependen ni ban moten molongopung. Nanareman niyang somri ban intayer niyana somsawas. Molongopung ban itiata enen. Free of charge ban representen may wia dependen. Ime isduka padawan poyi aramasku kat. Yirel kabina pititok oray ban rapagi eh arailpung poyi. Arail metaglan yirel wia government official. Ito wasan may agis etiet reyabu utrum kamodawat, Mrs. Speaker. Itame yonbatadawan kapatayong.
Kalangan, miyena masan.
Speaker.
Speaker.
Kamui Chairman and Finance.
Kalangan kumai Speaker, itjungal remarks ban General. Koi ban pain patawan painnei. Niyang somri akin yangsho pay yang kapung. Patutahan Chair Jan Wipukun. Ayakin nanchiyang alledi yirel kan me ban kak entatongu kak sewosi ye. Muyata itjungan pilpil. Wewoki information. Tamay patawan sansalangme kasalata namur laut nan rewajme etiet mia. Sotje ichar information jare kapuyata decision. Eri, main Speaker. Ibel tijungalanbi etiet. Ma wewaj ban kak pali totok sang nitebita ulalimui. Tri kak kaporporke me iijtowan moni magtri ban kats kita. Te, aban ilwasaki sa. Ban kak aten mia nananapen supplement po. Yet. Tri moanghi ya strategy ma sang mati Attorney General ban tatongi te his lawyer ma ban mo. Song information ko ban hinan sewosi ye yang chenaki rewajuk kapungatata ngangkunama. O lewren paitak state ban sue national government on behalf of officer court. Te, amanamanja ban wiyare ai moni wut ban sawasmo. Yiren paitak laka mon mitsojok. Eri onye main Speaker isai kak yang kosanertie tijungal mata mata me payang wutjungatata so. Sotje information ri. Eri yan kak wya kat decision ma yu ayana information. Kalangan, main Speaker.
Speaker, day komal ma minitewo.
Med shey alangan Bombay Physic SEH Radio. Ainsoset rich ti sangar weipukon kalonyarlech Bombay. Nan kanta kakapachapa Chen Mike Nisha. Physic SEH Radio. Ma wya sapulmen government nan wein Bombay. Ma pachepana pualkawedan Bombay Public Broadcasting Corporation. Ma kin katarech ngolngil nan kilorit kit papuki paisatwau o kin kelailki wajnen.
Sin tu take four.
Ma masani floor amendment reyapku oneo laban yar reza xilu. Koi ban bonus Senator Xaid.
Ban, main Speaker, sangki sangni kawedkan. O pektekkan. I ban teki permanentan dro de kapurulang ban Committee in Finance. Rangkap kachiyo yang wia kama konam opung omellem.
Kariamen.
Kalangan. Kapurudan an session.
Kalangan. Moni ban bonus Senator Perez ak may kapurapoin bonus ma floor amendment eta floor motion me yayar. Try dan report back floor amendment. Reyapku oneo laban yar reza xilu. On Committee in Finance rencek o kapurutong committee with recommendation. Koros mo utung kamoguto masaniye.
Yay.
Uwong masanisho kamogut paitan.
Speaker. Etu late yen kapatayong motiono?
Masanuben motion.
Motiono.
Fine.
O. Eh main ibilkosapwal trylen weyweke me. Utani yang ipukon state dan defend araila isome ishobara ta. O nan motiono iman kapatayong. Renbil trylen weyweki. Yang one moni maru state kitarni yang somri defend araila isome. Case yu yau yu. Pok trylen bil weyweke ma batong ma batong mo yaban one moni magtri ban spendla on caseo. Kalangan.
Kalangan. Senator Mobik ma apokom yang Committee in Finance. Kamellem and Chairman tak mayta.
Kamui komal ma asan service.
Kawed kelo ongura pasimpalma kom kasalita. Na try komal minitewo.
So, Speaker, eh.
Med shey alangan Bombay Physic SEH Radio. Ainsoset rich.
Here is a law, floor amendment.
Motion close me motion.
Aban bonus. Kamogut me mia. Try dan retingiti. Masanuben kamomotan kosunet papuki paisak oneo laban yar reza xilu LT1. Koros mo utung kamoguto masaniye. Uwong masanisho. Kamogut paitan ok try retingti er masanuben kamomotan kosunet. Moni tri ban katlang nan usus pueki ranwood. Try ban katjen nan karyaw ok emseklan watawat. Aban rule mesapulmatay rule merquire duplication and certainty. Ok try dangkagan katlang nan usus. O declare kamomotan kosunet papuki paisak oneo laban yar reza xilu LT1 willar LT2. Try ban katlangan nan usus and roll call koi ban bonus Chief Clerk.
Senator Abram.
Amin.
Senator Abis. Senator Artui. Senator Daniel. Senator Edgar. Senator Edman. Senator Edwin. Senator Etsay.
Amin.
Senator Johnson. Senator Joseph. Senator Latorre. Senator LaK. Senator Loyola. Senator Ludwig. Senator Miguel. Senator Movek. Senator Ned. Senator Pres. Senator Simla. Main Speaker.
Kalangan Chief Clerk. Paita. En sapulmatay totok. Te usus on kamomotan kosunet papuki paisak oneo laban yar reza xilu LT2. Usus reza A o sorta baguang. Ranwood try kamalala kamomotan kosunet papuki paisak oneo laban yar reza xilu LT2. Kalangan. Miadre Kamu Chief Clerk.
Kalangan, Speaker.
Asalar aban bonus of floor leader. Speaker, men wata kamogut try langkak katiyang.
Kariamen.
Pali nanbe sekuang miselinyes. Sansal makamoguta me yayar sang floor leader o mia kariamen. Try kat kat yeron. And the. Speaker. Speaker. Kamui Senator Artui.
Kalangan ngubrami Mr. Speaker. Ani Ratchoror. Imin burang pesa palaisa kretaan wao kay ban medchiangyer. Mr. Speaker. Ainsu yu samalar nan sapulmatay wia kupur. Nan ainsun komal. I ipajwanda. Omabit tai pun me kawela kuamo say ban. Eri ya sansal me nanai kasalata nanatay nan sapulmatay komalo. I doki tamak tri kakuyan. Magti langkak sewosi ki tai pun. Eri sansal me eh kuchai say kuyan me okta. Sansal me BUC toularo eh wia totok ma wyu. Me sansal merakataralar manakapulimen. Imen trylen recognize yrel. Me sansal me eh ainsu ma wyu soladi eh sohulukay yang kuchai. Sansal me manakapulimenome eh ulianlar BUC oyang sawas oneeta eh liyalakan seliliyalakan mawala. O re koseme eh yirel me ulimeno eh best of the best. Me sansal merelil eh sangan totong kay maruwata inanan inanan kamariiniata eh imkay the residents kay. Ayin ranwood try langkak recognize yrel o iban eh patwanta etarrelka.
Eh Mr. Inos Wijab. Mr. Clinton Obispo. Mr. Wilbur Samuel. Mr. William Roth. Mr. Mike Irons. Mr. Kitson Cabriel. Mr. Bert Philip. O Mr. Kevin Artui.
Imanakapkac me sansal me niyareyellemo nan. Frontabamera totok rakawatar imo resident kariang tonangan abukusama. Eri rabangwia totok monanaren eh we payo. Ayimet me imen trylen kuya try kabungongrel mellem management BUC. O bilpatyangrel menko mbikan me bil sawsawas palio. Me bilpatyangmo mellem government kuam arayka aray sawsawasi yrel sapulmatay manakapka. Ayimet kuchailane wu beno ketski yangrel manakapkac lapalane wu lobolobon.
Kalangan Senator Artui. Kalangan kubrami. Kamellemo tamakom sakar kita. Kamellemo kamogut makamuya ranu. Wya sapulmatay sawas. Weykiya sansal yang BUC o weipukon magtry concern kiro. Eri yang kagatu sansal nituoneipadawan. Sangni sakarakar mawiwawu ranu kabina kadin utungatar pekpek me sang kuam. O sansal me eh communication bil letong speaker o bil Madam Chair. Eh in Public Works. Communication kan me bit pekpek sawas sang kabinan kuam o kabinan Bombay. O emen bil ulian tryti o kabungyang mellem kabinan Bombay. O General Manager in BUC. Para kak oke eh pekpek sang win kuam. Kalangan kubrami.
Speaker. Senator Perez. Kalangan, Mrs. Speaker. Ay donal Ratchoror.
Speaker, Kamui.
Kalangan. Niyare yu me ipadawan nan wewa. Ayu. O painnei tawen tamay padawan sang source. O itiara me sangwut me. Ananayang kak permaangi on weipukon o blumomotwood. Information me ipadawan share yu. Me bit extensionen eh pekben absentee pallet sang alway amarga. Eh gumuburabu di. Eh. Idoan wadawat mesapung. Tamay meenam eh ime extension me yau yu ususan. Totaglan prosan kosan dlabesem. Me mia. Ye extensionen kawata special pole in place nan win kuam o awai. Ab extension on teki absentee pallet eklosero utungang burang opu. O yangan me tsankak sansalang momotwood me. Yrelar amas te wana bugi siliakan lemme. Eh aplay sangnan win amarga gengak yang usus. Kuawu gupin wayu me ts. Nan regert me ipadawan alledi sang eh directoran usus. Me magayun laut me padolong sang wain chuk. Aramaski tsama. Magayun pa ye win yap me tabamen. Eri men bakmaangi te yewewu sansal nan wewa. Wilban sansal nan tukson totok deslejo. Iman mualang kadin kabuhalan. Extensionen special pole in place. Me mia. Aowang pekben absentee eh shodre ma wu. Le witoan Ratchoror. Main aban kaputon imen padawan dadru. Iman padawan ulian di kitkan me padawalong floor amendment ranwood. O padawan kapungi eh kubramal me sansal. Eh. I padawan tamanda ewxilebin kash menwagen padawan. Shesima iban kapatalpung. Metana enemen keet enemen ol er keet. Kagatru wia enemen ol na tibso kesambol. Eri kapungi rot eh opolda. Ommon sansal me parilaudenang floor amendment kan epital. Iman padawan kapatayongatsum. Iitame men Bombay paygi sangni. Negenaglan sentkan ye eboldan al. Kapungi yang waleban outawailan kan. Me shoripan yang paygi sentwood. Ab yang usus utungada floor amendment bukat. Ayimet kalangan, Mrs. Speaker, o kalangan kuburan arbon number skoris.
Kalangan Senator Perez, Miadre Ratchoror. Kamui Speaker. Speaker. Main waw lan padawan pata floor. Wya ta pekpek yu. Special session wood jalengkak karira sang rantwau on rani sekyau. Ban ititi niat. Yu yau kamoguti yu pekpek.
Sensal mau kamoguti yu me yayar. Karira lan special session wood and karirilasang rantwau on rani sekyau o ban ititi next week. Niat. Koros mo utung kamoguto masaniye. Uwong masanisho kamogut paitan Kamui Vice Speaker. Kamui Speaker.
Iman yatak kamoguting jalengkak. Ranwala disangan wia kupur moitang kamtekan. Me shobai kapukon tolan nan totok pronsapali nan molwut nialen klokejsek.
Kalangan moni ban bonus kamoguto biapakayang sang chairman kan.
Yet.
Kamui Chairman and Finance.
Men pagita kametian monima miniature yau morin wia kupur na chamber.
Speaker. Eh sansalang mau pekpek sang Chairman and Finance. Committee in Finance. May ban katkana morin session. Eh ban retiti wasakset. O imen pekpek mayla newan Chairman and Finance.
Speaker. Kalangan. Speaker.
Kamui.
Ichangon monitai iman padawan pakay. Ma Kametian Shab pekpek baladlok ewelep ranwood.
Kalipulpe pekpek sang Chairman and Shab kloke walep ranwood. O imen pekpek Kametian Shab onewang Chairman o Vice Chairman. Kloke walep. Chairman the Madam Chair and Public Works.
Kalangan Speaker. Imen yang pakay. Me kloke wu. Ranet Public Works bil ban tuwana o katry nomination in Physic SEH. Melu wako. O yangaki faito. Klokyau faito. Or try ban kloke wu yau. Kalangan.
Kalangan Madam Chair, iman kalipulpa. Pekpek sang Madam Chair. Committee in liability si kloke wu o klokyau. O ibagumalane wu Madam Chair o Vice. Kloke wu leklokyau.
Speaker.
Kamui. Pilew.
So sangni pakayro eh pyaitan ainsu. Imen padawan pekema. Regak morint Kametian Finance. Pugi esteban rirai. Eh imen ewi yang committee sang arrel eh. Anaandan manana pol ainsu karworo.
Kalangan. Committee in Shab ban right after Committee in Finance. Na masulara ban internate motiono. Koros mo utung trylen ranwleti o sabalbene nialam klokejsek masaniye. Uwong masanisho kamogut paitan. O try ban katpasang o sabalbene nialam klokejsek. Kalangan kubramal koros.